Good evening. The special meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
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 Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Stephen Ryback as temporary Board Secretary for this meeting in accordance with NJSA 18A:16-1.1.
Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Ms. Arminio was opposing. Abstaining?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Then, whenever you have a role call.
Ms. Arminio?
I am here.
Mr. Braverman.
I'm here.
Are you here?
Here.
Mr. Mayo?
Here.
Ms. Kalipanowitz?
Here.
Slang is absent. Ms. Quarino is absent. I'm here. Mr. Russo is absent. Mr. Rutzke is absent. Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Just get to the... In accordance with the provisions in New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted June 1st, 2018, at all schools, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. So, we will go right to public forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Education, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And Ms. Arminio?
Before, yes, before I, I am compelled, once again, the third time in a row, to object to not having the proper public forums and on this, on our meeting's agenda tonight.
Thank you. We will note that in the minutes. Anyone wishing to come to the microphone?
Krishna DeKale, Laban Jake Place. I have a question. What's the agenda of this forum? This meeting?
What is the purpose of this meeting?
Yeah.
Acting Superintendent Search Deliberation Process.
Okay. So, last meeting was also the Acting Superintendent Search, right?
And Superintendent Evaluation.
And Evaluation. So, the question then comes in, you gave a notice of non-renewal to the superintendent before you actually evaluated his performance?
Yes.
Okay. Well, having said that, I also want to point out that enough, I've spirited a campaign letter in support of Dr. Kozak that has been signed by almost 600 people here, and I support Dr. Kozak. I believe he is the best man for this job. He's brought the school districts to a respectable level, Monroe Township's school districts to a respectable level. We have a referendum that is still, needs to be done. There's overcrowding and everything else. So, I support Dr. Kozak. I want it on the record, please.
What's your question?
It's a statement.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Right.
Thank you.
So, having said that, I have a question about the referendum. We were discussing referendum last week, before the clock ran out on me. When we were doing the middle school referendum for February, it was told that enough, if the referendum fails, we would turn back and push the same referendum through, because we need the schools, our schools are overcrowded and everything. We are now looking at May, and we still do not have a path forward on the referendum. Last time I've been told that there's a steering committee that will come together. Why is there a delay? I mean, when the middle school referendum was, came out and was sent to the, or sold to the public, it was said that enough, middle school is dangerously overcrowded and all that. We're getting 18 trailers, we won't get anything. So, what's the delay that is stopping us from doing what the Plan B was, then?
Well, if we go to Plan B, again, we need to have a recommendation from the administration, which we have not had yet, and then we would need to go to the state, which would take six months, and we will not be able to have anything in place, again, before 2019.
Yeah, but then, that was not what was told during the, not saying that. What I'm saying is, what was told during the referendum was that, you know, hey, if it fails, we'll turn around and get it in within six months.
Well, I, okay.
Yes, it is, it was said that.
But if we decide to change it, because we know that there are a lot of people who did not support the referendum, because we did not include the high school addition, so if we're looking to add to anything to that referendum, then, then we can't, we're not turning around and going out right away for the second referendum.
So, you are, in effect, changing the referendum?
We are not saying that at this point. There has been no recommendation. Everything is on the table.
Okay. So, what is the criteria for selecting the, the selection committee or the steering committee? What's the criteria for it? Who is on the steering committee for the referendum? How do we get who is on it and?
The steering committee was created about three years ago by then-President Doug Pointe. There are members of the board, there is a member of the public, there is a member of the MTEA, there is also the board attorney, the business administrator, the superintendent, and the assistant superintendent, and the director of facilities.
Okay. So, I have seen reports coming out of the Board of Ed, going back, as back as 2014, that show that enough, the high school and the middle school, at least the high school was, the middle school?
At this time, the kind of...
Never mind. I'll come back next week again.
Can I say something?
Yes, Mr. Braverman.
I realize how frustrated the public is, but I gotta tell you, prior to that, that group getting together three years ago, I spoke to Mike Gorski, and I said, "Let's build the high school, let's put an addition on Oak Tree, and let's build another school where Apple Goth is." Had that been done, we would be there already. I mean, this is, this is crazy, the way we keep, I'd like to, I'd like to really say the way we really are doing things. It's just beyond imagination. I couldn't write a book with this. It's just frustrating.
It is frustrating.
But, but the problem is, we're not taking, you're taking direction instead of being proactive, and that's the problem.
I hope you'll start the time now. Prakash Purup, 33 Denner Drive. Last meeting, you President, President, you said, "Contract Non-Negotiable Letter" was given to Dr. Kozak on March 22nd. According to public understanding, in February BoE meeting, a motion was passed to have Dr. Kozak rescind his resignation and start negotiation for two years' extension. Dr. Kozak rescinded his resignation in February. Then, on March 22nd, a meeting, in March 22nd, BoE meeting, there was no quorum, and the meeting was canceled. So, it looks like you, the President of BoE, gave the letter to Dr. Kozak on March 22nd without majority consent of the BoE. Can you please explain?
I will not talk about the superintendent's contract, nor the statutory notice. It's not that I will not talk about it, it's I cannot talk about it.
Okay. I'm just noting, I want this to be, to the record. That's why I'm asking these questions.
And to clarify your comment?
I don't want to take your time, please. You answered my question. Thank you, please. I said the question.
But you had misinformation there, because the statutory notice was given on March 27th.
March 27th. Okay. You know, Dr. Kozak has a vision for next three years, including strengthening of our science and technology program, increasing the science and math competition, continued to pursue college and corporation partnership, increase more innovation projects in. So, he has a vision, and you are pushing him out. So, we are in June. What we have observed so far is no productivity from BoE leadership. We have observed several issues, such as teachers' contract not signed for several months, failure of referendum of middle school, several walkouts by BoE members, attempts to push out deserved superintendent Dr. Kozak, bylaws not followed with respect to reappointment of superintendent, no lobbying for the fair funding for the school, no urgency to bring up updated referendum to vote this year, lack of transparency in providing information to public, nothing positive has been done under BoE leadership in several months. What BoE leadership has done is split BoE rather than uniting them. We feel lack of leadership. We in public are disappointed. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Raghuti Turi, 23 Green Ash Street. I want to bring up two main issues, one with the leadership, and two regarding superintendent Dr. Kozak. If you look at the stats, the way the park scores have increased over a period of time under the Dr. Kozak's, we see significant improvement. We attribute that to Dr. Kozak, as well as the teacher's contribution too. And two, regarding your leadership, Ms. Kathy. Somehow, as a public, like as a parent of a high school student, I want some kind of a trust, confidence, and transparency in some of the decisions that the board is taking under your leadership. We, as a community members, around 600 to 700 people have signed a petition to extend Dr. Kozak's contract. We have listed the positives that we have seen under the leadership of Dr. Kozak. Despite that, the board has made a decision to not renew his contract. The, the lack of confidence is not, I mean, I understand what are maybe the reasons you don't want to extend his contract, that, I'm not denying that part, but what we want is a transparency in explaining to the, to the residents, to explain, like, no, what went wrong? We are fine. But we need a transparency here to let the public know why the decision has been made and why, when it has been made. We don't see a consistency in those decisions. You know, one time, we all agreed here that his contract has been extended, in the sense, we are taking back his resignation. And after that, we don't know what happened, and again, the news came out that his, his contract has been not renewed. I mean, what I want to ask you is, why there is inconsistency in this kind of information when shared with the public? And trust part, that's another important thing. So, when, as a leader, the, the public expects some kind of a trust and confidence. We are lacking, I mean, we are not seeing that. Maybe like, no, you're not expressing it in a proper way to the public to gain the trust. That's another thing that I want to bring it up. And I looked at some of the previous BoE meeting notes, and I see that the overcapacity issue has been identified in 2014. I want to know, as a leader, as a president of this board, when you took up this role, you are already on this board for past 14, 15 years, I believe, and you know the overcapacity issue. As a leader, what decision have you taken, or what is your contribution to address, starting from 2014? And we are five years into it now, almost like four years done, and fifth year into it, and we have lost one referendum, and we don't have any action plan, at least, the public is not informed, what are the next steps? We've been coming to these BoE meetings, and we have been asking every, every month. There's no transparent information, like, you know, there's no information on, there are no next plans, like, you know, what is, you know, we are planning for next referendum, if at all, if you want to go. Same with the next superintendent too. I mean, what are your criteria to look at new superintendent? You know, will he be able to handle the new referendum, or is he aware, like, you know, if at all, like, you know, how, how, how you want to handle the overcapacity issue? Like, what will be his contribution, or what would be his inputs, given our, like, you know, overcapacity issues?
For the new superintendent?
Yeah, I mean, these things, we wanted to put in, in your interview, whatever, like, you know, the selection criteria, as a public, we wanted to know his contribution, his information, like, how you want to handle when it comes onto the board.
Well, first of all, and we go into the referendum, we have nothing new to add. So, there, and when we do, and we had been giving updates every month when we had an update. Right now, we have no referendum, we have no, a, what's the word I'm looking for? The superintendent and the administration has not recommended a plan yet. The board acts on the recommendation of the superintendent. So, there is no recommendation. We are still in the process of looking at all options. When we have an option, we will definitely bring it to the, to the Board of Education. In regard to the contract and, and the transparency, there are things that the board cannot discuss with the public, especially if there's pending legal matters. And that's all I will say. Any, if you not, you have the right, as a citizen, to go to New Jersey School Boards and question this, or go to the county superintendent, because everything that we have done has been done with the knowledge of school boards, the knowledge of the county superintendent, the county business administrator, and our attorney-client privilege. So, that is all I'm going to say. I'm not responding to any questions in regard to the process of the superintendent's rehiring, not rehiring, or contract. I cannot. It's not that I will not, I cannot do that.
I totally understand. That's what I said, right? You know, at least for the sake of all.
I'm sorry, your, your time is up.
That's right. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. Here we are again, another week, another special board meeting. This meeting is called to continue along the process with selecting an acting superintendent as a result of the action taken by the board president to act alone and write a letter to Dr. Kozak saying he would not have his contract renewed after board members walked out of the meeting and there was no quorum, a letter that should have been voted on by the board before it was sent to Dr. Kozak, yet there was no vote. It seems to me this board president is acting alone and outside of the guidelines set forth by New Jersey School Boards and state regulations. So, tonight, there are internal candidates being interviewed. I'm asking this board to take this very seriously. We have heard for several months from members of the public how there was a plan that was devised months ago to terminate Dr. Kozak from Monroe and to put Dr. Alvik in his place. I believe this is still the plan. I do not know who has applied this evening, but I'm hoping this board will go into those interviews and truly listen and evaluate the qualifications of each person. I would like to point out that Dr. Alvik's contract was delayed being voted on this year, which I find very interesting. Go back to the agendas for the last several years, and the assistant superintendent's contract was always voted on May, in May. Interesting, though, if her contract isn't approved, how could she even be considered for acting superintendent? Additionally, I'd like to point out some things this board should consider. Under Dr. Alvik, we have more testing of our students than ever before. We keep coming up with more and more ways to test and collect data, rather than worrying about what we're teaching. The curriculum has been watered down and, and has not been seen by many parents as challenging anymore. The big policy she is spearheading is a homework policy that has been dragging on since the fall, which only serves to micromanage teachers further. Now, we are hearing that she is involved with spearheading Classroom Alexa. As a parent, I don't want Alexa teaching my child it's a computer. And I don't want my tax dollars going to pay for technology, when we don't have enough technology now in the lower schools to be conceived, to be seen as a competitive district any longer. What's next? A virtual classroom, where students don't even have to come to school? And at the last Board of Ed meeting, I'd like to point out, Dr. Alvik had security walk her out to her car and watch her leave the parking lot. If she's so scared in her current role as assistant superintendent, what will happen when, if she's appointed acting superintendent? Are we gonna be hiring Secret Service? Parents have grave concerns with Dr. Alvik's ability as assistant superintendent, and we have even more concerns with her running the district.
Anyone else from the public?
Ramragnath, 6 Ovin Stride, Monroe. As others have mentioned, it's June, June 7th, right, to be exact, and really, as we look back at this board, at the Board of Education and the leadership, what has been achieved, it's very dismal, very poor, right? That's the rating I would give. There's really no productivity that's coming out. Teacher's contract dragged on for months. The referendum failed. Nothing in sight for 2018 with the referendum. The well-respected superintendent of the school, Dr. Kozak, is gone or almost gone. No replacement in place. So, we are very, very disappointed with where things stand, and really, I think there's some soul-searching to be done by the BoE and the leadership in particular. In terms of Dr. Kozak, again, we are reiterating that, that let's not waste time, let's focus on getting him renewed back in place. His achievements, right? Park scores have gone up in the last three years, highest in Middlesex County, it's not a magic. Science competition, you know, Lockheed Martin, again, his accomplishment. I know there are others involved, but he's the leader. The administrative team worked with Dr. Wagner from Harvard, right, to help students be innovative, in terms of how they think about their projects, again, building future leaders out of Monroe. Dr. Kozak has also helped with the Innovation and Entrepreneurship Center, right, with Dr. Ashenwald. Internships for students, high school students with the medical group, lawyer's office, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Lobbying for fair funding, he has done his part to take things forward, not much action from the Board of Education. He has also a very clear vision of the next three years, what our children need, the focus on strengthening our science and technology, increasing that level of competition, which is very important for our kids, helping them really pursue that college programs and that corporate partnership for people to get internship and experiences, and then, really, that innovative project-based approach for students. There are a lot of things he had in his vision, he has done a lot, the members of the public really support him, we are really, really concerned, particularly with this referendum and all the things on the plate. We are requesting, begging you, you know, please, let's put politics aside, issues aside, personal issues aside, and let's renew Dr. Kozak's contract. It is really important. I think if one thing the BoE can do to be successful in 2018, that is it, getting Dr. Kozak back in the saddle, and then, of course, let's take forward on the referendum. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Naga Wacha, 15 Harvest View. Ms. Kathy, when answering one of my fellow residents' questions, you mentioned this evening that the referendum failed because high school was not included. Do we have stats to show that? Is that something that you have already shared?
No, I, I did not say that the referendum failed because we don't have the high school addition on it. I said that there were a lot of reasons why, but there has been a lot of requests to put the high school addition onto the referendum. If we do that, we have to, it's a brand-new referendum, and we have to start all over again with the process with the state.
What I heard was that the referendum failed because many residents were unhappy that high school was not included, or at least, that's what I understood.
No, go ahead.
So, does that mean, again, I know you answered already, but I'm, I want to get it straight, does it mean the referendum won't go in until we decide once again on whether it's for middle school, or high school, or both together?
That's correct.
So, we're taking a further step back?
We're not taking a further step back. We're looking at, we're digesting some information that we should see, some surveys, we're asking for updated demographers reports, and we're, should be getting all this information during the summer. If we want to put something on the agenda, on the ballot for next March, we need something in place by September.
So, when you say by summer, do you have strict timelines that this is adhering to, or is it just end of summer, middle of summer?
Well, the state has strict timelines. There is only five days out of the year where you can go out for a referendum. There is, you can go out...
No, I'm sorry, I was referring to the data that you're waiting for.
Right. We're, we're hoping to have it by July, because if we want to go out by March, we need to have all this in place by September.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close public forum and go to closed session resolution. Be it resolved, that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects, Acting Superintendent Search Deliberation Process. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Can we ask questions about that before?
You have to move, move the resolution first.
We gotta pass the motion.
No, there's no questions on closed session resolution.
There are no questions.
No.
No.
No, not on closed session resolution.
Well, you're asking us to approve to go into closed session.
Right.
Once that resolution is passed, we can make a statement about going into closed session.
You usually don't make a statement.
It doesn't matter what we usually, if, if there's usually no statement.
I need a motion and a second to approve this.
I'll move it.
And I'll second it. And now, I'd like to make a statement. First of all, I believe that this is, it's possibly a dubious procedure to seek acting superintendent based on the last actual vote in March, that we were, we had voted to reconsider Dr. Kozak's contract, and nothing was done, and then, unilaterally, a letter was sent out without any vote at all from the board. So, again, I think this is a dubious procedure. And also, President Kalipanowitz, since you mentioned it in public, you mentioned that you received, you've had discussions with the county superintendent, with school boards, and I think the county assistant, but it seems like that was also done unilaterally. I had written you in private before the meeting to get the direction and summary of discussions you've had with all those people to fully, to be a fully informed board member, and I was told there, there was no, there was nothing in writing and no records of those meetings. And I feel that if you're, if you're making statements that you, you're telling the public that we're supposed to proceed based on your, your meetings with these people, I think that members of the board, who are equal in, who are, we are supposed to all be equal, should be apprised of those meetings, first of all, and the summary and information derived from those meetings, and that has not happened. So, I don't know, really, what was done in those meetings. It's not recorded, it should be recorded, it may not, we may not be able to speak about it now, because it's not resolved, but the public deserves a public record of what occurred in order for us to proceed. So, that's my issue. And on the referendum, well, we won't talk about that. You're right, I can't talk about that now. Thank you.
I have a question and maybe a brief statement, but I want to know, are we gonna be voting on any of these candidates tonight?
That's up to the board.
Okay. And how many votes would be needed to approve of?
To approve anybody for any superintendent position, you'd take six votes.
So, it would take six votes of this board to pass anybody that we interviewed tonight?
Yes.
Not, not a simple majority, but?
No.
Of the, of the, those present?
So, it would take unanimous vote, essentially, given that Mr. Russo unfortunately is a conflicted member.
Well, that was my other question, is that I don't, I don't believe that he is conflicted anymore, because by the time that this acting...
He's conflicted as of today.
As of today?
Right.
But the acting superintendent doesn't, won't take place until July?
But, but as right now, whatever we're doing today, he is conflicted.
But it's up to the board member to vote or not, based upon that conflict, from what I've learned from previous experience, right or wrong? That it's up to the board member to recuse themselves or not, or vote or not, and we've had a similar conflict.
I don't want to go into conflicts with board members. We're, we have a resolution now, and...
Right. And I'm, well, all I'm saying is, I think it would be up to Mr. Russo if he votes or not, not up to you, Madam President, because we have had similar conflicts in the past, and those people have not been stopped by you.
I...
You've not stopped them from voting, and now, we have somebody who could possibly vote, and I think you should be allowed to vote, and then, let, 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 let the law sort it out. That's all I'm saying.
So, we have a resolution to go into closed session. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, at this time, the board will move into closed So at this time, the board will move into closed session. This time, the board will move back into public session, and seeing that there are no resolutions, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Mayo, Mr. Chiarella, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And at this time, the meeting is adjourned.